Test, test. Testing one, two. I've called meeting to order. Mr. Milas, will you lead us in the flags? Good evening, everybody. We'll take roll call at this time.
Commissioner Rustaller.
President.
Commissioner Milas.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Tua Devuki.
Present.
Commissioner Tsang Hong. Commissioner Tsang Hong is absent.
Okay. At this time, we'll ask if there are any actions, additions, withdrawals, continuances.
Thank you, Chair Rustaller. Yes, tonight we have two requests for continuances. The first item is number two, a general plan map amendment, zone reclassification of major subdivision of Oakwood Ventures. The staff would like to request a continuance to a date uncertain while we continue to work with the applicant and the city of Manteca. The second item is item number four. A conditional use permit represented by Mike Hakim, the attorney. He has agreed to continue that to May 1st to continue to work with staff on a few unresolved issues. And that would be it. Thank you.
All righty. So at this time, we'll go to public comment. And the public is welcome to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda.
I got it. Chair, could we maybe get a vote on continuing those two items so that we can close that issue?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion to, for item two and item four to be continued.
Move to continue with item two and four, two for a date to be determined, and the fourth for May 1st.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please take a vote.
Commissioner Milas.
Yes.
Commissioner Tua Devuki.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller.
Yes. All right, so at this time, we'll have a public comment. Anyone who's welcome to address the commission of items of interest that are not listed on the agenda. Anybody like to come forward and to address the commission at this time? All right, seeing now, we'll go to consent. Agenda items, items calendared for consent will be approved in one motion without a public hearing unless a member of the planning commission or the audience requests that the item be removed from the consent calendar and heard separately. Anyone on the commission like to pull item number one, which is on consent? Anyone in the audience? Do we have anybody online tonight?
We do. Anyone online wishing to pull item number one on consent?
Okay, hearing none, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent item number one.
I make a motion, we approve item number one as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Tua Devuki.
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Milas.
Yes.
So passed. That'll take us to item number three on the agenda, a conditional use permit. And just a quick overview of how the public hearings are conducted. This item, which I just presented, will be listed, and the staff will present a report. And then the commission will ask questions of the staff. The chair will ask for staff recommendations. The chair opens the hearing for public comment and informs individuals to state their name and address at the microphone before commenting on the project. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for item number three and ask for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. We have Associate Planner Elisa Goulard with the presentation.
This project is a conditional use permit for a combination fueling station to be completed in two phases over five years. Phase one includes construction of a canopy with six double-sided fuel dispensers, a convenience store, a tunnel car wash, and a station for filling propane tanks. Phase two includes a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Currently, there is a full-service restaurant on site. A portion of this restaurant will be converted to the convenience store in phase one, with the remainder continuing in operation as a restaurant. The project site is located in Lockford on the east side of North State Route 88. The project parcel has a general plan designation and zoning of community commercial. There is commercial development to the north, to the south, and to the west of the project site, and to the east is residential development and parcel zone for future residential development. This is the revised site plan submitted by the applicant, which depicts the proposed use and onsite circulation. As part of the conditional use permit, the applicant is requesting to extend the hours of operation to 24 hours per day in order to broaden the customer base and offer convenience to highway travelers. Although the development title standard for convenience store operating hours is 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., applicants may request a modification as part of their permit. Because anticipated traffic volume is below the threshold for requiring a traffic study, no traffic mitigation is required. However, to improve onsite circulation, Caltrans directed the applicant to remove the existing north driveway, requiring all project traffic to utilize the existing south driveway, which the applicant has depicted on the site plan. Public water and sewer service to the site will continue to be provided by the Lockford Community Service District. An onsite retention pond will be constructed at the rear of the property for stormwater drainage. CDD received one letter of opposition to the project stating concerns about onsite circulation and possible impacts to the commercial development adjacent to the south, and also about the offering of redundant services. However, the applicant has provided a site plan that depicts all of the required elements for the project, including circulation, driveways, and parking. Although there is a fueling station and convenience store adjacent to the property site to the south, the county does not regulate the concentration of these uses. CDD recommends that the findings for use permit can be made in the affirmative as analyzed in your staff report. These findings include consistency with the general plan, site suitability, and compliance with the development title. This photo is taken from the west side of State Route 88 looking east toward the project site and the existing full-service restaurant. This photo is taken from the rear of the project parcel looking west toward the highway at the existing onsite parking and circulation. It is recommended that the planning commission adopt the negative declaration and the findings for use permit and approve conditional use permit number PA 2300250, with the recommended conditions of approval contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on the commission have any questions this time? Okay, if not, then we will move to the testimony part of the public hearing. Would the applicant or the representative please come forward?
Good evening, planning commission member and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eugene Nguyen. I am with CSHQA and engineer. I'm here to represent the applicant and just would like, first of all, I would like to thank the staff for their assistance in bringing the project before you today. And I also would like to introduce the applicant, Mr. Emre Diol. He's also present here tonight. And then I just want to thank you very much, Elisa, for the presentation. You pretty much spell out the basic of the project here. I just want to add some more to that regarding the exterior signage shall be permitted by the San Joaquin County sign ordinance. Then, you know, the rooftop of the building is going to be screened from view by the parapet, and the facility is also designed for incorporation of the solar panel. Exterior site and building lighting shall be installed with light shield directed downward to minimize light transmit to adjacent property. Parking is provided per San Joaquin County standard, including accessible parking, and we also have about 16 electric vehicle charging stations for this site here. For traffic and circulation, you know, we work with the Caltrans and, you know, they pretty much approved the traffic that leading to the North State Route 88. And on the site, you know, onsite vehicle circulation, we have been planning for the ease of maneuverability and to minimize interaction of vehicle and pedestrian traffic. For security, the site has been designed to provide well-lit, clear line of sight view, allowing sheriff and police ease in observation from the street. Site and exterior building lighting are placed in reduce, to reduce high and lurk area. And the store manager and staff receive extensive training in maintaining store security, deter potential crime and violent, which include security procedure and proper store maintenance, violent avoidant, and what to do in case of robbery. A top-of-the-line 24-hour surveillance camera system is being installed, capable of download for law enforcement use. Whenever a building is tagged, a graffiti appear, and the staff act as quickly as possible to remove or repaint to restore the original intent color. For the refuge mitigation, secure trash enclosure are provided at each facility per San Joaquin County standard. Trash receptacle are placed at pedestrian area to minimize cast off. The staff will walk around the site at chain of ship to gather any loose trash that may have been inappropriately discarded. Thank you for your time tonight, and we request the opportunity to respond to any comment, question, or concern from the community or the commissioner. The team, myself, and the applicant are available to respond to any question or receive any comment you may have. And at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Emre, Mr. Emre Diol, the applicant, to share his thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a reminder, when, please give us your name and your address, and then speak to us.
Hello, hello. My name is Emre Diol, 8858 Latigo Court, Roseville, California. Dear Planning Department, I represent Highway 88 Travel Center LLC with respect to its renewed application of the site contemplating the development of a refueling station with restaurant, car wash, EV charging, and QSR located in Lockford. I want to thank the planning department for helping us get this application this far. What Highway 88 Travel Center is offering to consumers are attractive alternatives. The community has offered opportunities for unemployment. The project is anticipated to provide 20 to 30 jobs. The city of Lockford and county are provided tax revenue in productive commercial real estate property, which has been sitting idle. What we have made a priority on this project while designing the layout and floor plan is to incorporate the existing Georgia's Country Cafe, which opened in 1980. Georgia's Country Cafe will continue to operate for years to come. In short, granting Highway 88 Travel Center application to develop its lot is a project, is a positive step for all. Our team is here to address any questions or concerns that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions this time for the applicant?
Just a question on the existing restaurant. The, will it require any upgraded automatic sprinkler systems, fire protection? Does that fall under the, I'm not sure about the new building code or fire code requirements? I know it was built in 1980, so.
Restaurant right now is equipped with the fire sprinkler system.
So it doesn't require any additional upgrades with?
To my knowledge, it's not.
Okay, okay.
Okay. This time, we'll hear from any proponents of the project who'd like to speak in favor of this application. Do we have anybody here? Anybody online?
Yes, we are.
Anybody online there who'd like to speak in favor of this application? All right, then we'll hear from those in opposition of this project. Anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this item? Anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this item? Okay, hearing none, I don't see a need for rebuttal from the applicant or their representatives, so I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Commissioners? Any comments?
Chair, just, just one. It's good to hear that there's alternatives, measures for vehicles in the 16 charging stations. So I'm happy to see that's been included into this project as we move forward, so that's great to see.
All right. And the chair will entertain a motion to accept item number three.
I make a motion, we accept item three as presented by the.
Applicant.
App, yes.
With the findings? Recommendations?
Recommendations of the app, yeah.
Of our community development department.
There it is. That's the one.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved in seconds. We approve item number three, the conditional use permit number PA 2300250, with the recommendations of one, to adopt the negative declaration, attachment C. Adapt the findings to the use permit, attachment D, and approve conditional use permit with the attached conditions of approval. I'll call for the vote at this time.
Commissioner Milas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yes.
Commissioner Rustaller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tua Devuki.
Yes.
Motion carries. And that takes us to the announcements.
Thank you, Chair. I do not have a lot of exciting announcements. I will let you know that the last item that you heard, which included a lot of text amendment cleanups from staff, will be going to the board on April 22nd. Other than that, this is, I think, our only second meeting of the new year. So welcome to our new planning commissioners. I'm really happy to have you, and please feel free to let staff know if we can do anything to assist you. And that would be it for me. I will turn it over to Deputy Director King if she's got any future meetings on the books. Just one second.
Hello, Madam Toby. We have a lot of messages posted online. Can somebody please look at the team's chat? We are 20 people from the Oakwood Shore community trying to say something. Can somebody please look at the team's chat?
Chair, I will let you know that we do have a number of people who have been writing messages on our team's app. We don't typically monitor those and respond to those. I will, they're frustrated that they didn't get to speak on Oakwood Shores. However, that is not an item that is for discussion tonight. So I just want to make sure that you're aware that that's happened.
And it was put without any notice and removed from the agenda previous meeting as well, so it's the second time in a row.
Second time, yes.
So hang on, folks, online.
How many, how many people do we have on for public comment? Okay. So, so this matter has been continued. I'm not, I'm not going to read the messages in the chat, but are you looking to still publicly comment today, or would you rather wait until the matter has been continued and appear on that date to provide your comments?
Do it today. There are a lot of people who have made their time to be present today.
I understand. However, at the very beginning of this meeting, I asked if anyone wanted to speak on items not on the agenda. We heard nothing. I even asked if we want to review the tape, if there was anybody online who had any public comment, so.
And, Mr. Toby, we were not allowed in the chat, so we were waiting in the lobby, and nobody was allowed into the chat. And we also had, we had also had two representatives reach there at the city hall, and, you know, they were told this item is not on the agenda, hence you can't speak, and whatever. But the part of frustration, Mr. Toby, is that this is the second time without any notice it's been removed. And you can imagine, we all have kids, we have family, dinnertime being sacrificed to be there on the calls, and we understand you've got other pressing items, and we respect that, but having no notice is kind of unacceptable.
Okay, so I, I'm in a little bit in, this is the chair, I'm in a little bit in the dark about not having noticed. Do you, do you, do you acknowledge that I did ask if you wanted to make public comment? And you're saying you weren't on the chat line at that time? How, how many people came on after that? Excuse me. How many people came on after I asked that? Do you know?
Seventeen, seventeen.
Yes.
One, seven.
But at what time?
By 6:05.
It doesn't show when they come online. There was a mass group that I let in at the start of the meeting.
Okay, so they were let in at the Okay, so they were let in at the start of the meeting into the chat line? So they could have spoken up when I asked if anyone had any?
We did not hear that question, sir. We did not hear that question.
Yes.
Chair, I'd like to just point out a couple of things.
And people.
Excuse me, I do apologize that you're frustrated. We, staff, once we determined that we were going to need to continue this item one more time, we did notify everyone we had on our list via email or by mail. I am sorry if you didn't get that notice. My concern of having them speak tonight is that we did not open a public hearing, this would not be on the record for that item. Correct, counsel?
Yes.
So, when will be the next date? And will be guaranteed time on that date?
Yes. So, I would advise, can you hear me? I would advise you reserve the public comment for the day that this matter is continued to, for the reasons that Ms. Jolly noted, so that they will be made part of that record.
And I just checked my emails, and all of us did, 20 of us here having a separate group chat outside this teams, where we got an email just yesterday, or day before, saying this item is on the agenda. And after that, no emails received, so even if you would have sent it, sorry, we didn't receive anything. And we understand, you know, we did not open a public hearing, so the comments can't be recorded, but at least give us some kind of concrete answer on when this item would be addressed next time, so we all can again be there. As you can imagine, it's hard to corral 20, 30 people from one community with kids and elders and everything else. And there's a second time, and I'm afraid we're dwindling in support here.
Right.
At the same time, we care deeply about our community, sir.
Yeah, can I ask you a question? Are all 17 of you are going to basically say the same thing about this item?
Pretty much, and we all have emails. We've all had, yeah, you can hear the resounding yeses, and we sent emails as well.
I take that you're all in opposition of this item, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
So, it's highly unusual for us, since this was an item that was not agendized. I sympathize with all 17 of you on this call. However, I don't think it's in the interest of this commission to make an exception and go back and open up a public hearing for items not on the agenda. We'll defer to counsel on this.
So, Chair, if I may, the item on the agenda is the continuance of that item. That's really what was decided today. So, if, I suppose if you want to comment on the continuance, you could comment on the continuance, but in terms of like the substance of the project, that is going to be reserved, you know, for some time in the future at a different hearing, and it would be appropriate at that time to provide comments on the actual item. Does that make sense?
Yes, and can we be assured that next time we are given a date, it will be respected? And we won't be turned away like this?
Yeah, I agree. I think we are able to finally unmute ourselves. We were having a little bit of a challenge, so there were 20, 25 people there initially. I think many of them dropped out because they heard of the continuance. Many people didn't understand what does continuous mean, so maybe that was the reason why some of the people did raise their hands. We are residents, we've not understood some of this lingo. But yes, the first time it was canceled, this is the second time it's getting pushed out. We do want to make sure, we appreciate your explaining everything, that it's not in the agenda, but we do want to make sure that next time it happens, that it doesn't get canceled, because it does not seem fair for all of us. We have voice, and we want to be heard, and we are at the right place to be heard.
And we want to hear from you, but I don't think this is the time to do it.
No, I understand. We understand, we just want to get an assurance from you that next time we come, that it be heard and it not be continued further.
Okay, can I ask another question? Is there one person who's sort of coordinating the 22 of you, that we can definitely make sure they know and they can pass the word? We will do our best to make sure you all know, but.
He is in the room.
Doctor, yeah, Dr. Srinivas is there in the room. Dr. Srinivas, if he can speak up, maybe they can connect with you.
I think he left.
Chair, could I add? So I would like to assure the public that because we are doing this to a date uncertain, if the project is going to go forward, we will be re-noticing the item. We never intend to notice an item and then intend to not have it go forward, so sometimes the situation is out of our hands. In this situation, we still have some issues to resolve, and so the best I can advise the public is that we will send out new notice when this gets agendized again, and we always have every intention of taking an item forward when we agendize it, but unfortunately, sometimes it needs to be postponed.
Sure.
Thank you.
We will be happy this time if we are given a date, and on that date, the hearing will actually happen. That is all we are asking for.
That's our ask. We are making time as residents, as community members, and we want to make sure our time is respected, and we are heard the next time. We can totally understand what you're saying, but we just want assurance that next time it will not be continued.
Okay, I don't, we'll, to our best of ability, say it will not be continued, but something else may come up, and they'll ask for another continuance, so it's hard to say we definitely know what date this here, this will be on the next hearing. So, April 17th, are we having a? Okay, so right now, we can tell you the meetings we're not having.
No, we do have a meeting on April 17th, I'm sorry. But this item has been continued to an unspecified date. We have some things we need to work out with the city of Antica, and we do not know how long that will take.
Okay.
How short or long that will take.
So, those on the line, you understand that we cannot give you an exact date when this will be heard. Is that understood?
So, Chair, if I may. I'm sorry, Chair, if I may.
Up until then, the project will not continue?
If I may, today, we are not continuing it to a specific date, but as Director Jolly stated, once we do know of the date, the county always provides notice, and that's all that we can provide and give and give you assurance of, that if, when we know the date, notice will be provided, just like it typically is, and that's the only assurance that can be provided.
Can we have at least a three-day notice?
But this notice, this notice, we did not receive it.
Yes, everybody did not receive the notice. Only, I think, one or two residents received it. Everybody did not receive, that is one. The common interest sent us a notice, that's how many of us heard about it, and we all joined.
Director Jolly, can you remind everybody how notices are given?
Chair, typical, so standard notice, that we have a radius that we notify within the project, depending on the zoning, that determines how far out the radius is. However, anyone who comments or requests notification of a project is added to our list and will receive both notification of future meetings and cancellations. We also posted it on our website. We did send emails, so I apologize if you did not receive it. We sent it to everyone that we had contact information. We also sent notice and mailed notice to people within that radius as well. So, all I can say is I am sorry that that happened, and I'm sorry if you feel like you wasted your time tonight, and we will do our best to make sure that this item goes forward.
Not only tonight.
This is, yeah, this is, so can we put our email addresses here? We are all in the same radius, we are all in the same community, we are like next door.
Exactly.
So can we put our email addresses here? So can we all put our email addresses here to ensure that we receive it?
Also, the person who was there in person, he is getting back to the hall, so Dr. Srinivas will be in the hall in the next few minutes.
Okay, through the chair, excuse me. My recommendation, I think we need to stop probably talking about this. However, this is what I would recommend. Please contact the planner that is listed on any of the notification that you have received in the past. Stephanie Stowers is the project planner, so she will make sure that you are all added onto this list if you did not receive it at this point, so.
Yeah, we will certainly, we will certainly.
Okay, thank you.
You know what, folks? Again, we apologize if there's some miscommunication, but the meeting, I am going to, at this time, wrap it up. Any other comment from commissioners? By the way, welcome aboard.
Yes, yes, so.
Just a sec. And so, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting until we meet again. Meeting adjourned.
This is so ridiculous.
At least we were finally heard.
They're adjourning a meeting because we have a point of view? It's like silencing.